Okay, good morning. Welcome to the Delaware County Council meeting, May 25th, 2021. The time is nine o'clock. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order, and if everybody would please stand for the pledge of allegiance. And Bill, you want to start us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And could we get a roll call for attendance, please?
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Ms. Chambers?
Here.
Ms. Lassiter?
Here.
Ms. Piper?
Here.
Mr. Quagan Bush?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
Mr. Alexander?
Here.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Ms. Flowers?
Here.
Thanks, Denise. And again, I would direct any public comments to the county council email address that was set up, countycouncildist@co.delaware.in.us. Again, that's countycouncildist@co.delaware.in.us. Denise, was the agenda posted?
Yes.
Thank you. I need approval of the agenda. So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Ballard, second from Piper. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quagan Bush?
Here, yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes. And I need a motion to approve the April minutes and also the executive session, which I passed out to you guys just prior to the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
For both?
Yes.
Okay. Got a motion from Piper, second from?
Webb.
Webb? Any questions, corrections? Okay, if not, roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quagan Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Stain.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes. Okay. Just a quick announcement for any of the department heads. We've got some economic development things this morning that may take 45 minutes to an hour, so if you guys want to come back, then you can, or you're more than welcome to stay. I just wanted to give you that option there, so, all right. And Brad, we're gonna start off with Resolution 2021-015, the economic development agreement. And I think what we, Bill, we're gonna hear from them first.
Okay.
Is that right? We'll hear from them first, and then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
We'll pass these out, and Joe will highlight what's different in these from.
We've got some updated economic development agreements from what you guys have had seen already, so we're gonna get those passed out as well. But Brad, if you want to go ahead and get started, and we'll.
Excellent.
Go from there. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. It's a pleasure to be with you and before you this morning. I'm Brad Bookout. I serve at the county commissioners' pleasure as Director of Economic Development, basically economic affairs for the county. So we've got a project that is of great significance to the county. I'm excited about it. I know that the whole county team is excited about it. We've had the pleasure of working cooperatively with Tracy Lutton and the Muncie Economic Development Alliance on the project, and we're excited to bring it before you today as the first public body to formally hear this in a public setting. So to start off, I'm going to discuss the order of presentations of the speakers who will be here before you this morning. Each of them have been instructed that just a couple minutes of information, and when we get to the end, if you have questions, please share those. We can discuss those questions, your thoughts on the project. And then we are looking for a favorable motion and second from you today. So first up will be Tracy Lutton. She'll describe the site and a quick project overview. Tom Johnson, representing the company, will discuss the company operations and plans. Joe Retz, county attorney, will give an overview of the agreement. Matt Eckerly from Baker Tilly will discuss the financial side of the bond issuance. Jim Staton, Secretary of Commerce, who I don't believe is here yet, but we're hoping he's, he will be here, may say a few words on the project. And then lastly, as I mentioned, we'll answer questions and have discussion on the project. So on behalf of the commissioners and the whole team, we want to thank you for your consideration of this today, and I'll turn it over to Tracy.
Thanks, Brad. Morning, Tracy.
Good morning. Hi, council, I'm Tracy Lutton. I'm with the Muncie Delaware County Economic Development Alliance. Thank you for giving us an audience today. Hopefully, you'll be as enthusiastic about this opportunity as we are and have been over the last several months, quietly toiling away and working on this. This highly confidential project has been evaluating our community for many, many months through a rigorous site selection process. It's truly been a process of elimination. They started with a lot of sites and narrowed that down further, and then we became a finalist, and here we are today as the choice location. And hopefully, we'll hear a little bit more about that later. So thank you for your support that you've given us thus far to help us close this deal. The project is considering a limited industrial site on the corner of Cowan Road and Fusen Road. This is a site that's been contemplated for industrial development all the way back to 2004, when it was initially put in our economic development plan for the area. And since then, we went through a site selection process, did a lot of work to get that site ready for an opportunity such as this. When we did all that work, we knew that we were preparing, we were making sure that we had a product. So when a company such as this came to us, we would be ready, and here we are. That work is paying off now. So with that, I want to thank AEP for helping us with that site certification program, and they've really worked a lot on this project, too. So this is a well-established global packaging company with an existing location in the United States. You'll hear more about that now in a bit, but this project will be exceptionally clean, mechanized, high-tech, great training opportunities for employees. And we think that they will also be a good corporate citizen. That's part of their, who they are as a company, that they give back to communities and they're active participants in the local community. So I believe if we win this project, this will be the largest upfront capital investment that we have seen as a county, at least in modern day. We don't know what those older investments from the '60s, '70s before that would be in today's dollars, but certainly by today's standard, this is really incredible opportunity. So I thank you for your consideration. With that, I will turn it over to Tom or Brad. Are you coming back up?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you, Tracy. And thank you, everyone, for having us here today. My name is Tom Johnson, and I am the Regional Manager, Head of Operations for a company called Canpack U.S. LLC. We are a wholly owned subsidiary of a company called Giorgio, who's based out of Blandon, Pennsylvania, and Canpack is headquartered in Krakow, Poland. We have 27 sites all over the world in 17 different countries. We've made our first entrance into the U.S. market here just in the last year with a site in Pennsylvania, and we are rapidly expanding in the U.S. And as Tracy mentioned, long journey to get here in a short period of time, and be remiss if we didn't thank some folks that helped us to get here today. Members of the Delaware County Council, Delaware County Commissioners, the ECI Regional Planning, Muncie Delaware County Economic Development Alliance, certainly Governor Holcomb, Secretary of Commerce Staton, and the entire state administration. Without everybody's help, we wouldn't be here, and again, we are absolutely thrilled. It was a long process, and Muncie certainly emerged as a finalist and the best selection for our needs. So as mentioned, we have about 8,000 employees worldwide. With the site in Pennsylvania, we'll be just up to about 8,500, and with this site here, we'll be getting close to 9,000 employees worldwide. So we intend to bring 345 full-time premium positions to the area. Again, as Tracy mentioned, these are high-tech manufacturing jobs. We don't touch cans when we're making cans unless we're doing quality control on them. So everything is about machines and high-tech manufacturing. We intend to build an 862,000-square-foot facility with the potential to expand it to a million square feet. Our initial capital investment is gonna be $380 million, with the potential for that to grow if we decide to expand based on need to $490 million. We, again, excited to be here, a lot of reasons. You know, we went through a pretty rigorous process, as Tracy mentioned, but, you know, we found the team here, and the state of Indiana especially, but the team here in Muncie and Delaware County, just to be incredibly responsive to our needs. Speed was a big factor for us. The aluminum can market right now is 10 billion cans short, and we're importing cans from all over, and our customers are screaming for us to meet that need. And getting to the Midwest was a very important part of what we needed to do, and the responsiveness from everybody in Indiana and Delaware County and Muncie has been outstanding and tremendous. And we're really excited to be here and appreciate everybody's consideration today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, council members. My name is Joe Retz. I am the Attorney for the County Redevelopment Commission and the County Commissioners. I'm gonna talk to you quickly about the economic development agreement that is being handed out as we speak. So a copy was given to you, I believe, last week. The copy that's being handed out now is not very different. The only difference is the version you got last week did not name the company. This version does. So that's the only change that was made between the two versions. The economic development agreement is relatively simple. It just basically says the company has certain obligations, which are to basically invest at least $380 million in a new building and equipment, hire 347, I believe, employees, pay an average wage that's at least 25% higher than the average wage for the city of Muncie employees. Sorry, employees within the city. I shouldn't say city of Muncie employees. Anyway, they have to accomplish all this by the end of 2022. As far as the new facility, equipping the facility is done by the end of 2023, and the hiring is done, I believe, by the end of 2025. If they fulfill their obligations, then the county is willing to give, basically pledged, 75% of the TIF revenue that's generated from this project to repay potential bonds. The bonds will come at a later point, I think, maybe in the next couple of months. But so the county will be, in essence, foregoing 75% of new revenue. It's not affecting any current revenue. The county's not losing any revenue. They're just foregoing basically 75% of new revenue, but they'll be retaining the 25% that they can use for whatever they see fit. It's a relatively simple agreement. It's only, I think, 12 pages with the exhibits, which is pretty concise for an agreement like this, but I am happy to answer questions that you guys may have.
I don't know whether it's you or Brad to answer this question, I guess, but can you talk just a little bit about the liability that's on the company and the liability that's on the county?
Sure. So the company is buying its own bonds, so the county will issue bonds, but the company is buying them. So the county will, in essence, repay the company. If TIF revenue is not generated that's sufficient to cover the bond repayment, then the company just is out. The county will get their 25%, the company gets their 75%, and if it's enough, it's enough. If it's not, sorry for the company. But in essence, it means that there is absolutely no real liability on the county's side. The county will be getting its revenue, and the company will be getting its revenue. And if there's, if the project, you know, we go through this whole process, and the thing never starts, you know, day one, they don't even break ground, they get nothing. And the county is out nothing. So it's a win-win, I think, for both sides. Let Brad fill in the gaps.
Yeah. So what's important to note about this project is the fact that the company is fronting the money for the bond issuance. So the county does not front any dollars from existing taxpayers or from any existing areas. The repayment for the bond issue is repayable from the investment solely that the company makes at this location, not from other taxpayers in the community. So we're basically assisting the company in a way that is allowed by Indiana code so that they can receive funding back from their investment to help pay for some of their initial upfront costs. It was very important to the Delaware County Commissioners that the county is not in a position of liability and is not at a position of risk. And I know this council's very aware of past projects that have not been set up that way, and we're very cognizant with this project to set it up in a way that the county and the taxpayers are protected. We're equally, though, excited about the project that Canpack is bringing to Delaware County. We have to be cooperative and work with them through this project, and this is the best way that has been brought to the table to do that. So happy to answer any other questions along those lines.
Any other questions from council at this point?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify real fast. You're saying that 75%, the company's putting all the money up for the bonds, and then the TIF dollars that are generated from those revenues will go back to pay the bond to the company, and the county will keep 25%. Correct?
Yes, for a period of 15 years. And if there is a shortfall in the revenue, the tax revenue, the company is responsible for paying that shortfall.
Thank you.
Ron?
Yes, Mr. Johnson, did your company run the revenue values based on our current assessed valuations to see if you would come clear? I'm surprised you're only asking for 75% of the TIF.
Yeah.
That's a positive, but.
Yeah. So next up is Matt Eckerly from Baker Tilly, who's gonna answer that very question, Ron. So you're right on point. Bradley?
Thanks, Brad. And really, Brad and Joe covered the majority of what I was gonna cover, so I can just say ditto and go sit down. No, I'm kidding. Nice to see all of you again this morning. My name is Matt Eckerly with Baker Tilly. We, as the financial advisor for the Redevelopment Commission, have been working with Brad's group and also with the consultants representing the company to model the estimated tax increment revenues that would be generated from the facility and also providing the county with options of what that pledge can be to the incentive. And through a process, it's been mutually agreed upon, that 15 years, 75%. We're still hammering out the particulars of those revenues, and when it gets to the stage where this body will be contemplating the adoption of the actual documents that authorize the issuance of the bonds and the Redevelopment Commission pledging those revenues, we'll have that information for your review. So you can see, you know, from the concept that we're describing today into actual, here's what it looks like, here's what those estimated revenues are, the bond structure. And as Brad and Joe both mentioned, it is being set up to limit the liability of the county to strictly the pledge of TIF revenues. There will not be any other county funds made available for the repayment of these bonds. And Ron, to answer your question a little more specifically, we're digging in, you know, the actual assessed value of the current site. You know, a new TIF area is gonna have to be established, so there's that base assessed value that will stay in the tax base of the county as well.
At the end of 15 years, they should wash, if everything works right. If the revenue is higher than you anticipate, and the 75% be applied to the bonds, do they pay them off early, or do the company receive that money on an incremental basis over and above the revenue?
We're still working on the details of how that will operate if there is an excess rather than a shortfall. And again, that's something that when the authorizing documents are before you, we'll be able to lay out the mechanics of that a little more specifically.
If I understand these TIF districts, that money that's generated in that TIF district, it won't reduce the tax rate once it goes away?
Well, it depends on, you know, if the bonds are paid off and the county elects to terminate the allocation area. If the assessed value that is released, that's no longer being captured, if that growth in assessed value that that results from the expiration of the TIF area exceeds the growth that you have in your levies, then it would actually drive the tax rate down. But as this group is well aware, there's quite the soup that goes into calculating property tax rates in Indiana, and there will be other factors that could mitigate that impact. But it would generally, that growth in assessed value will have a downward pressure on tax rates. How much, that's gonna be figured out in 15 or so years.
The TIF district has to be eliminated once that 15 years is done, or that TIF money still stays in the TIF?
If the area is not eliminated, and this area would have.
It's never been eliminated around here, yeah.
Well, and this area will have a statutory life of 25 years from the incurrence of the first obligation. So there's an end date regardless, once you close on these bonds. Now, once these bonds are paid off, the Redevelopment Commission could act to terminate the area before that 25-year life, and that's a policy decision down the line.
We won't be, I won't be here.
I can't answer any questions on that, Ron.
Shouldn't I have debated that before?
Yes, we have.
So those TIF districts, I know Brad explained them to me how they worked really well. I know a lot of people aren't really exactly familiar with it.
True.
If I'm understanding it correctly, the tax value that's on it now, that money will stay with the county. Because of this investment, anything from that point forward, 75% goes to the bond, 25% goes to the county for 15 years, correct?
Correct.
But all the money he's been paying this year and all the previous years still stays with the taxes on the county, just like if it was still an open field.
Correct, yeah. That will not change.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council at this point? Okay, thank you.
So one important point to make is the fact that this is a very common structure. This is the structure that the Indiana State Legislature has put in place for local municipalities to do incentives on large economic development projects like this. So we're working within the confines of the Indiana code in order to do this. This is the same structure that you'll see when you see other large economic development announcements throughout the state, from Toyota to Honda to Subaru. There are bond issuances in many of those cases that also support those types of projects. So with us today also is Secretary of State Jim Staton, and I'd like to introduce him to say a couple words on behalf of the project.
Thanks, Brad. It's a pleasure, actually, to come back to the town I grew up in and issue and offer support for what an exciting project for Muncie and for the state of Indiana. The governor extends his regrets he wasn't able to be here, but he's in Israel right now, talking to Prime Minister Netanyahu. But what a great day for Muncie, what a great day for East Central Indiana and the state of Indiana if this goes through. I mean, it's a fantastic project. How exciting to have a can manufacturer come back to Indiana, and I just can't express enough support and also appreciation of the team that came together, you all, Brad, Tracy, Sean. It's just been second to none. And top to bottom, when the governor spoke with Chairman Georgie last Friday, he couldn't say enough great things about the community of Muncie, the team in Muncie, and the team at the state that helped bring all this together. So we're grateful to the company for this consideration. We're excited for the company and excited to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brad, can I chime in real quick?
Absolutely.
Just for the public's sake, you know, we dealt with a project that had some environmental concerns and whatnot a while back. When it comes to the public, is there an impact study or anything like that that's gonna be?
Yes.
People can read it and see it, you know?
Excellent point. So Delaware County, as you are aware, we crafted an environmental questionnaire after the previous project that had environmental concerns. We provide that same questionnaire to new companies now who are looking at the community. Canpack willingly completed that questionnaire for us, and we provided it to Mundell &amp; Associates, which is an environmental firm that the county is working with. They have completed a full analysis of that and are working with the company. I can tell you that from what I have seen now, all of the operations, what Mundell has provided to me at this time, all of the operations at Canpack fall within the guidelines of the state of Indiana. There will have to be some permitting that will be completed through IDIM, and we are watching that. We're well aware of those different steps, and we will continue to be monitoring that as the project moves forward.
Mr. Ballard, that's built into the agreement on page two, under the project development section, so that commitment is in writing.
I just wanted it said in a public meeting. Exactly. Well, and Bill, was that one that was added, or was that one already in the economic development agreement?
I think that was already in the earlier version, yeah.
Okay. There were some other things, I think, added to the economic development agreement.
Over time, it's been an evolution.
Yeah.
One commitment that, on page three, that council members have expressed an interest in is commitment of the company to give preference to the extent reasonably practicable to residents of Delaware County in their employment decisions.
And then would you also go, I don't know if, I can't remember if it was you or somebody else on the team, but would you go over all the approvals, this thing? And you may not get them all because there's quite a few of them, but it has to go.
It's quite a list, but I'll try to recap the best I can off the top of my head. But yeah, so the county council, you all will hear this twice. This will be back before you at a future meeting. Oh, thank you, Matt. So, yeah.
It may have been Matt that gave it the last time, I can't remember.
So, yeah, so starting on May 13th and concluding on August 13th, there will also be a hearing of the Planning and Zoning Board regarding the TIF district being added to the redevelopment area. The County Redevelopment Commission will hear this project twice relating to the bond. The county commissioners will also hear this project, and the Economic Development Commission will also hear this project. So I think in total, I think that's seven meetings total, and we'll walk it through those steps. This is the first of a long process of opportunities for public bodies to see the project. So to date, everyone that I have shared this with has been 100% supportive. It's important to note that bringing this caliber of building, this caliber of employer to Delaware County is reminiscent of the days when we had large industrial factories here, which I was blessed to grow up with, a father who worked at one of those factories. And, you know, I'm here today because the food that was put on my table was provided by a large employer in our community. And for that, you know, that provided me an opportunity to go to college and for me to have a family in this community. And I think we're all here in some aspect, one way or another, because of the large employment opportunities that have existed here. Manufacturing has changed over the years. This is different from factories that we have had here in the past. This is a very environmentally responsible company. I believe that the wages are very strong with this company, and we need to have a diverse set of employment opportunities for the residents of this community. And we need to also not have all of our eggs in one basket. In the past, we have focused on automobile parts, and as we know, when the automobile industry goes down, so does our local economy. Diversification of our economy so that we have different sectors for employment opportunities is vital, I believe, for the long-term sustainability, and less rises and falls in our local economy. So I appreciate all of you and your consideration and recognizing the importance of this and seeing this built in the community. We've seen a lot of those old historic factories being torn down, and this gives an opportunity for another factory to be put on the tax rolls that can provide assessed value so as we can continue to provide services to the residents of our community. So happy to answer any more questions that you have.
I guess I just have one more comment. To this funding mechanism, you said it's part of the state code and whatnot, and just for those of you who weren't familiar or don't remember those tuning in, we did have another company that had planned to come to Delaware County, and that didn't work out because COVID hit, but they were going to be under the same structure of funding mechanism. So this is something we've been, it's been brought to us before, something very similar.
That is correct. So it's important to note that many of the companies that are in Delaware County came here under this same funding structure, even, and I hate to drop names, but even Meyer, the Meyer store, came here under this same assumption. So yes, this is a very common structure to work within to promote development and get development in the ground. Once that development is in the ground, there is a payback period. I like to call that payback period somewhat revenue positive to the county. We do still receive some funding during that period of time. The end goal is, is that once you build a factory of this caliber, you can count on that being on the tax. that being on the tax rolls for 100 years. So, you know, the long-term goal, the community will definitely benefit from this in the long term.
Any more questions from council? Okay, Bill, can you kind of just go over what we're going to approve here today, and then I'll entertain a motion for approval?
Yeah, and you're, what you're being asked to approve is the resolution 2021-015, the two-page document. It is called an inducement resolution. You are representing to the company and to the economic development team that you are in favor of this project and you wanted to see it move forward. This is not the final approval, it's the first step in the process. You are being asked to authorize the entry into the economic development agreement in substantially the form that you have in front of you. There will almost certainly be changes before it's in final form and finally executed. And this will not, this is your first shot at it. You will have in the coming months an actual bond ordinance that will be introduced, and then the following month be up for final passage, and that'll be your official act in approving this development.
And Brad, are we still on, on track for next month would be introduction?
Yes.
Of, of the, the bond agreement?
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Correct.
And then, and then we would approve that in the second month? So in, in June and then July? Still on track for that?
Yes, I have, I have the county council introducing the bond ordinance on June 22nd, and then the county council formally adopting the bond ordinance on July 27th.
Okay.
At your regular meetings. So two, two more meetings of the county council.
All right. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution number 2021-015?
So moved.
Second. Ballard.
Okay, all right, that happened quick. Ballard, on the introduction and, or the approval, and Piper on the second on there. Any additional discussion from council? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quagan Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you, council. We sincerely appreciate your consideration.
I want to thank Brad and Tracy and the whole team and the company for doing all they've done to this point, and whatever we can do to help things out moving forward. Don't hesitate to ask, we appreciate it. We are equally excited. We may not show it up here because we've got to keep a game face, but we are equally excited about the project, I assure you.
Thank you. Please, please rest assured also that Tracy and I will continue to monitor the, the company and the project through every step of the process. And so we do have the community's best interest at heart. At the same time, we're, we're very supportive of what the company is doing, so we're going to continue to assist them in every way possible we can locally, and we'll keep you informed as we go.
Brad, I was impressed by the, what the physical size of this building is going to be. Would you tell those here what you compared it to?
Yes, so, so size-wise of this building, and I, and I'm going to fumble the exact square footage for the initial phase one. Tom, could you help me with that number?
862,000.
862,000. Phase two, Tom, would take this to, to how large?
A million.
Okay, so in comparison, the Borg Warner plant, which we're all very familiar with living in Delaware County, was a million two square feet. So this is comparable to the, the construction of the size of, of reminiscent large factories that we've had in our community that were very important to Delaware County for many years and very important to many families and generations. So we're excited about this opportunity. A new day in Delaware County.
This is a really good time for the community. There's a lot of folks affected with the pandemic and jobs and struggling to get jobs with a good, confident living wage. So I'm sure this news will be good news for a lot of people.
Thank you, Ryan.
Mr. Staton, are you Carol Staton's son?
Yes.
Carol and I are friends, I've known him for a long time.
Oh, yeah.
His sister used to babysit with my children.
Yeah.
And congratulations for all you're doing and helping us out and the, and the success you're having in your life. It's really great to get to see you. Last time I saw you, you were probably about that high.
It's an honor to serve.
It's great to see you here, yeah, thank you.
Congratulations.
It's nice to have an appointment of the governor's staff who sees it important enough to come to a Delaware County Council meeting, so we're thrilled to have him here today.
Well, he surely knows what economic development means. His, his, his family has been quite a part of this development of this county as far as housing and such goes, yeah.
Very good. Thank you, council, we appreciate your time today.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you for the candy, Brad.
You're welcome.
You learn lessons from Jane, didn't you?
That's right, that's right. A wise young lady taught me how to, to-
I was going to say, don't take off because you're next, next up with another one, so.
Very good. Are we ready to proceed with that now?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So again, we're going to repeat the same general order of introductions and events. If, if the company, if Canpac representatives and those here want to depart, you're welcome to. We're going to present another project, and then we can regroup in just, just a moment. But I'm just giving you an opportunity, if, if you don't want to stay, you're not obligated to stay for this next project, okay? I'm going to introduce Tracy Lutton, who has worked very closely with a company called Living Greens Farms, that is, has currently a, an offer to purchase the Shell Building on Fusen Road. This is another good project, we're excited about this project. The Shell Building on Fusen Road is one that has been there for seven years. It is the ninth Shell Building that the county has cooperatively worked with the Delaware Advancement Corporation Board on. The other Shell Buildings in the community, as you know, are now housing of businesses and jobs, and we hope to have another good opportunity for another new business in that building. So from this point, I'll introduce Tracy, who will tell you a little bit about the project.
Good morning again, council. Tracy Lutton, Muncie Delaware County Economic Development Alliance.
Good morning.
Good morning. As Brad mentioned, we have a company that is considering the 200,000 square foot Shell Building on Fusen Road. We are in the process of negotiating a purchase agreement with them and really getting very close to the final terms on that. This is, the company is Living Greens Farm, Farms, based out of Minnesota. They, they specialize in indoor farming and packaging of produce, mostly lettuces, microgreens, and some herbs, and it's through a proprietary aeroponics process. So typically, when you think of aquaponics, you think of circulating trays of water with plants growing out of it. This is different in that the, the, the roots will be suspended and misted. So a little different there. And they've developed this technology or perfected this technology, and they would like to do that in the Shell Building. So it would be vertical farming, many, many layers of these different produce hanging and suspending, and then they would package and ship it. They have existing customers such as Cub Foods, Whole Foods, some specialty retailer, smaller grocery chains, but also some large ones too. And they're looking to break into the Midwest and to grow here. So our Shell Building presented a great opportunity for them because speed to market is important. They need to be operational by October, and having this existing business, or this existing building available for them is very attractive. They don't really have time to build new, and as you know, construction materials are hard to get and very expensive at this time. So we're well positioned for this project. So scope of the project is quite large, $45 million investment in real estate and equipment. They would employ 120 people. So local assistance will play an important role in the project, and so, and also our ability to close the deal. So we know that the final location, we believe that we are the choice location, but will, it will be dependent on local support. We've been working with Baker Tilly as always, bond council, just to make sure that the county gets their ROI too. And so I think with that, I will go ahead and turn it back to Brad. Who's next, Brad?
Joe.
Joe's next, okay.
Thank you, Tracy.
Sure.
So through this Chinese fire drill, we'll introduce Joe Retsz next to talk a little bit about the proposed economic development agreement that will be coming on the project.
All right. So this will be, this is actually a work in progress still. This will be probably very similar to what you just saw with the Canpac agreement. We're still, like I said, we're working on details on this. We still need to get some numbers from them, get a better idea of what they're looking for financing-wise and all that kind of stuff. I don't anticipate the council needing to be involved in this particular agreement, though. I think the reason you were involved last, with the last agreement, was just because the company had specifically asked for that to happen. I don't anticipate that being the case this time, so your only real role would likely be the bond. But again, the economic development agreement will probably be very similar, require the same dollar investment obligation and job and obligation, that type of stuff. But like I said, once we know more of the details, we can obviously share that with you, but right now it's more of a in-our-minds type of agreement. So I can answer questions if you have them, but other than that, it's pretty simple.
But all they're being asked to do today is to introduce this ordinance.
Yeah, the bond ordinance.
So a month from now, when they take final action, we may have more information.
Yeah, we are hoping to have the agreement relatively in place by the end of this month, which is obviously very soon. But I mean, when, once this goes through, I think the company will have maybe a better idea. I'm not sure exactly what their timeline is to get us the information we need, but I do think this will be a big first step that'll help us get towards that goal.
So relating to the economic development agreement, I have requested that the company provide us Delaware County with a financing letter, financing letter of approval, that they have proper financing for the project. I am waiting on that now. Despite that, they have asked that we go ahead and advance this process of moving forward with an issuance for the bond. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to Matt Eckerly to talk about the bond.
Hello again. With this project, as Brad and Joe have both mentioned, you know, today you're just introducing the bond ordinance that won't obligate you to anything. There's still details being worked out. I had a call with the CFO of this company on late Friday afternoon, working through some of the mechanics of how you leverage the TIF revenue stream. Similar to the Canpac project, it's kind of cool to be able to say the project name out loud now.
Yes, it is.
Similar to that project, the county's obligation here will be limited to the pledge of the TIF revenues. With Living Greens, we're looking at 70% instead of 75% over a 15-year time period. And when you're, the second reading and possible adoption of this ordinance next month comes to pass, you'll have the details on here's what we're looking at in terms of the sizing, the revenue streams, things like that. Like I said, we're still kind of hammering through some of the finer points there, but what is important to note is that this action today won't obligate you to any issuance, so you'll be able to run the additional traps that you need to run before you do your final approvals of this ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions related to the, the bond or the TIF that this group might have.
I have a quick question. So on the, again, this company, similar to the Canpac, is putting up their own money for the bond. The county has no investment in it whatsoever?
We're, we're working through whether or not they're going to front the money to purchase the bond, or if it's gonna, the bond would be purchased by a bank. But in either circumstance, the company, or the county's obligation is limited solely to the pledge of 70% of project TIF revenues.
And if they don't get the financing, that just goes away?
And there's nothing lost by the county if that were to happen as well.
So the same liability and accountability as the previous agreement?
Exactly, exactly. It was from the get-go emphasized by Brad and others that the county's liability is going to be limited to the TIF, nothing else. And that's what we're coming up with here. And, and this is for a purchase of the, the Shell Building, is that correct? So financing gets put, puts in place, who owns the Shell Building at that point?
That is correct. Currently, the Delaware Advancement Corporation owns the Shell Building, and the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission is responsible for the carrying cost of that building. That is for a period of 10 years, we're at seven years at this point, and so it would ultimately save the county upwards of $1 million in carrying cost on the building to be able to sell the building to this company.
So the company would, would own the building?
Yes.
At that point, okay.
Correct. And it would get the building on the tax rolls.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead. Any other questions from council? Do you have more to present on this?
I do not, sir.
Okay.
I will say they have a similar growing process. Have you ever been to Epcot down in Florida? There's a ride you can go through and you see them spraying all the roots. So I have seen this firsthand somewhere else.
Very good.
Well, and Tracy, I think one of the things that they are able to do by, by doing the process the way they do is, is save a lot of water. Do you want to say anything about that, or?
Yeah. It conserves more water than even a traditional aquaponics circulating system because it's just a missing operation, so it's really efficient in terms of resources.
Did you, did you tell us a number of percent of water that they saved by doing it this way?
I believe it's 85% less, and it's on their website. They have a great overview of their process and how it works and how they're efficient. I also should mention, I did not mention previously, that this project came to us really through the state's leadership, former Secretary of Commerce, and some folks from the Indiana Economic Development Corporation actually went out to Minnesota to meet with this company and present Indiana as a choice location for them, understanding that Midwest expansion was in their plans. And through that, of course, they looked at all of Indiana and started narrowing sites, and we made it to the end. And so really should thank Indiana too for that.
And I think part of the reason they're wanting us to go ahead and approve this, or introduce this now, is because of the aggressive timeline that they, yeah, okay.
Yes, they want to be operational by October, which is ambitious.
Okay.
It'll come quick.
Bill, Bill, could you go over what we're going to approve?
Again, this, this is the very standard format for the bond approval ordinance. Authorizes funding of the project through the process that has been described. You're only being asked to introduce it today. It is possible that between now and, and your next meeting, that there might need to be amendments to the ordinance depending on the outcome of the discussions with the company, but it'll be generally in this format. So again, it's for introduction only.
Okay, I would entertain a motion for introduction of ordinance number 2021-015.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any discussion, any further discussion from council? Roll call, please.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quagan Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes. And again, to both of you, thank you for your work on this and continued work on, on both of the projects, and, and we are equally excited with this one as well, so.
Thank you.
15.
I, I'd like to say one thing in concluding remarks, and that is the fact that your participation with these projects is critical. As we know, not all economic development projects work out. And so it is important, and, and in the best interest of you as a county council, and I'm, it is driven home to me by the county commissioners often, that the exposure of the existing taxpayers of Delaware County not be jeopardized in these projects. And so the structure by which we have set these up and presented to you today protects the Delaware County taxpayers. So we're very proud of that. On the flip side of that, we never want to be discouraging in any way of entrepreneurism and economic growth in our community. We have to be supportive of that and continue to foster these types of projects. So despite the risk of, of a project failing, we are still going to be there every step of the way to support these companies in everything that they do, and your participation today is a critical piece of that. So thank you for what you've done.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is totaling 525 jobs if both of them come through, so that's really good.
Yeah, so we're, it's a good thing. So thank you very much.
Can we take a five-minute break before we start our business?
We, we can, yeah, yeah. Let's take five minutes, let's try and make it five minutes so we can get back to our regular meeting.
I knew it. I'm not, I sit in and sit in the back room.
Oh, yeah. Grab this again.
Let me see what that one is. No, that one you don't.
You have final agreements that we need to sign.
Because that's a-
Bill, do you have a final?
That is, let me see what that one is. No, that one you don't.
You have final agreements that we need to sign?
Because that's a, just the introduction.
Well, I still need to sign off on that.
Oh, yeah. Tell your father, I don't know your mom will help, but I know your dad real well. Appreciate, yeah, tell him I said hello. Appreciate somebody local coming into this, so it's really great, yeah. Especially somebody that went to school with my kids, you know? Yeah, it's just good. When I heard your name, I, oh gee, I know that fellow, but it's been a long time. Congratulations and good luck on your future.
Good to meet you, sir.
I was waiting for the rest of the story.
His sister babysat with my kids, my younger ones, my older ones are older kids. Oh, I can't get over that mask. I don't know. I don't know. I'd rather see you. I'd rather see you. Been shot twice, I would say. Me, who knows what that serum did to me.
Economic development agreement you guys approved for the economic asset, it contemplates that if assessed values are higher than what we all anticipate, all that excess revenue, they get 75% no matter what, and it goes to the bond. If it just happens to have bonds of like two years. From that point on, we get the rest of the revenue.
To the TIF, didn't it?
Well, yeah, to the TIF district.
It doesn't come, it doesn't reduce the county general base.
Well, I mean, in theory, it could.
They won't do that. I've tried through a couple, three commissioners to get them to eliminate the TIF district, and they won't do it.
Yeah, we talked about eliminating, I can't remember what the TIF district is called, but I remember that. It's small, I mean, I think it'd be like that. And we talked about eliminating, not to keep it placed, but instead, they like to ask for that. I can see that happening. But the reason being is because they're looking at the TIF, and then something happens, and they want to, you know, establish the TIF standard.
Well, no, and you're talking about future generations down the road, and it's giving them an open checkbook.
The county commissioners.
That is a big checkbook. Big balance.
It is, so I mean, the.
If there could have been a sunset clause at the end of that 15 years in there, I would have appreciated that.
I don't know what that, I mean, you know, there's no telling where it will end, but it'd be nice to think they would be somewhat responsible. Not a slush fund, but it's.
It's close.
Close, yeah.
Once it's used.
Yeah, as long as they're responsible.
Because in our positions, we're just people sitting in a chair. We're making our vote based on existing conditions. And we're also making a vote for post-existing conditions.
I just put it in here, and they sign it after the meeting. Yeah, so you're okay. So just give it, yeah.
I would rather see them.
And then put, I'll give it, put it back in here.
Someplace else. I'm not going to be around much longer. I've got another year and a half, and I'm not going to run for reelection.
That's all, so far. Sorry, Becky.
That's kind of usual.
The government agreement says.
Now, if we can find people to work. You know what?
I think they, I don't know.
Yes, yes, right, yeah. Commute it from Andy, yeah.
They'll come from, yeah, Henry, that, and it's door nailed now.
How is it?
A little tender.
Is it really?
It's just a different angle, right?
That was a big hardcore.
Switch gears here.
Yeah, oh gosh, yeah. Yeah, that wasn't the best site. Possible contamination.
Yeah, you have an original for us. Right. The new one?
Oh, I think so.
Yeah, that's what I gave you. I think that's what's helping here, though.
I just want you to see.
You just signed a resolution that says, when the time comes.
Hey, let's go ahead and get back to it here.
The factory I worked in out on Eighth Street, the Boulders. The one that my friends worked at on Killjoy is Boulders. You know, so what the heck?
Okay, so now we're starting with the transfer's crack.
We will, yeah. And you'll start with.
First with the clerk? This was, yeah, this was just.
Okay, are you ready?
Yes.
No, I'm not ready.
You're good, okay. Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started. I'll call the meeting back to order, and we will start with the transfer agenda. Becky?
Good morning, council. County Clerk Rick Spangler asking for a pay line to.
Hang on just a second. Can you read those in?
Yes, B 118, 16, minus 16,94858, add C 118, 16,94858.
And I need a motion to approve.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Okay, now, go ahead.
Yeah, we're replacing an employee that's, that's moving to another office within the county.
Any questions from council? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Quagambush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes, thank you.
Family support? You have to read, read them first, because we have to motion in second. Why, we're just getting whoever was up there, okay? Yep, you're right, okay. B 107, minus 16,62654, to C 107, assistant, 16,62654.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Lassiter, second from Piper. Go ahead.
We stole an employee from Rick Spangler. Because one of ours retired, I think?
Yes.
Yeah, retired, so we're just filling this spot.
That caused the same reaction. That caused the same reaction in Finance Committee. I'm glad to see we were on the same page there. Any questions from council? Roll call, please.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quagambush?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes. Thank you.
Circuit Court, probation officer 192, minus 22,439, plus A 192 probation officer, 22,439. Do I keep reading them all up? And you do them all up?
Yeah, go ahead and read them all up. Thank you.
A 140 pre-trial screening analyst, 18,072, and add to B 140 pre-trial screening analysis, 18,072.
And the last one there.
Okay, B 136, assistant court reporter, minus 2430, to 441 office equipment, 2,230.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any discussion on that? Questions from council? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quagambush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mike Megan, EMS. Paramedic line A 113, minus 26,114, to B 113, paramedic, 26,114.
Second.
That was in, in 22 cents.
22 cents. I wound it, sorry.
Don't forget that. And I got a motion from Quagambush, second from Piper. Questions from council? Roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quagambush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes. Now, before I have you read all these, would, is it okay with council if we would just move to approve these as, as presented? There are a good number of line items there.
All moved.
Okay. Motion from Lassiter, second from Ballard?
Wait a minute, there is one correction on this.
There is? And it is down at?
21, 64105 on E 111.
Your last two lines down there should be minus 21, 64105 and plus 21, 64105. Thanks for catching that, Ron. I had it written down here.
There's also a letter change.
There is a letter change also on line 145, where it says 145E, should be 145D. Do you have that?
Where you're taking $380.
It was D 138.
Or E 138, I'm sorry. Yeah, one, it's line 145, E 138. The first one, or the second one you come to, should be D.
The $380 should be D 138.
Everybody with us on that? Okay. And is, is that your motion to include those changes? Ron?
I think it's me. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
These were changes at the Finance Committee meeting.
Yep. Okay, any questions from council? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quagambush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
You can get back to reading now.
Okay. Nancy, but the other line, deputy B 138, minus 25,94960, plus C 138, deputy, 25,94960.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Any discussion on that?
I don't remember us discussing this, but why is the difference 60 cents?
Probably a typo. You have your original, Nancy?
If not, I do.
We'll get, we'll get, we'll fix it.
No, it's a typo. Is that what it is?
Yes.
They should be the same.
It is.
So it should be 94960, 0.00 on both items?
Is it 00 on both, Denise, or do you know?
I have a question. When we're doing budgets.
60?
60 cents.
When we're doing budgets, would it be easier to stay with the dollar amount and not have cents?
No, probably because nothing's even money when we pay out. I mean, there's always odd cents when we pay out.
I'm just talking about when we're doing budgets.
If we rounded them all up, yeah, I don't want to see.
Right, I'm just moving what was actually left. Okay, so this is just. Yeah, this is just what was actually left on the salary line. Thank you.
And who had the motion on that?
It was myself and Webb.
Okay, and you guys are, the motion is for.
Okay, it was 60 cents, Ron.
On the, on the 138C?
Yes.
Yes.
So the total is zero.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, I moved as amended.
The, the motion will, will be for 25, 94960, minus, or minus 25, 94960, and then plus 25, 94960, and, and zero is the total on that. Any questions from council? Roll call, please.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quagambush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
You can go ahead and read those in on.
Public defender office, B 190, minus 19,000, C 190, plus 19,000, and 155, minus 18,000, and A 155, 18,000.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. These are both public defenders that they're refilling.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Quagambush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Prosecutors?
You can go ahead and read those in. You don't need to.
Investigator 117, 20,847, to A 117 investigator, 20,847.
Moved to approve. Second.
Motion from Lassiter, second from Piper. Any questions from council?
Do you want to grab her other two while she's there? Can we?
What's that?
I have two other transfers in different budgets.
We'll vote on this first.
Yeah, we'll just go through the order.
Okay.
Real quick here. Questions from council? Roll call, please.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
And Mr. Quagambush?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
If we, if we, if we skip around too much, we're going to find ourselves missing something.
I just was going by department in my head.
That's all right.
Clothing allowance 001, item minus 22, 2,250, to overtime 197, 2,250.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Do you want to talk about this real quick, or?
Well, as with the other, the one prior that I did, we're down to $937 in the regular dollars in the regular for overtime for the jail. Low it is also down, it's not as bad, but I'm taking all the clothing allowances from individuals who haven't worked long enough to get their first half. I moved all that money to try and use what we have in our own budget to try and cover overtime. And that's what this is.
This is because you're short of staff?
That's part of it, yes.
I mean, from just not enough people on.
Not enough people, people.
People have left, right?
Yes.
Any more questions from counsel? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quicken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Okay, lit budget investigator one oh three, minus twenty thousand eight forty-seven, to A one oh three investigator, twenty thousand eight forty-seven, and one seventy-three insurance, minus twelve hundred, to one ninety longevity, plus twelve hundred.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quicken Bush. Any questions from counsel? Roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quicken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Pretrial diversion, receptionist A one oh three, minus sixteen thousand five fifty-eight, to B one oh three, receptionist sixteen thousand five fifty-eight.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Quicken Bush, second from Piper. Questions from counsel? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Ms. Quicken Bush, or Mr. Quicken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
I miss you guys being in this building.
I miss this building, although I do have to say, I didn't think you'd give away my par, or the commissioners would give away my parking spot, but I suppose I'm okay with it.
We were gonna tell you that's why we were late.
Yeah, I couldn't find my place to park.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great weekend.
Thank you.
You too. Thank you.
Nice seeing you guys.
You too.
Juvenile probation, probation officer one ninety-two, minus two thousand four hundred and six dollars, to A one ninety-two, two thousand four hundred and six dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Questions from counsel?
Do you want me to explain? So the first page, you approved a probation officer, we had a probation officer resign. They're paid out of three line items. One is out of the main county general, one is out of probation fee funds, and one is out of juvenile fee funds, which we added last year in budget. So this fund is the probation fund, or the juvenile fee fund, and then the next one is the probation. So I'm just moving all those line items over for the new probation officer that we have, that we're hiring.
Okay, any questions from counsel? Roll call, please.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quicken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Okay, adult user fees, probation officer one ninety-two, three thousand five hundred and nine dollars, and add to A one ninety-two probation officer, three thousand five hundred and nine dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. You kind of covered this one already, didn't you?
Yep.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Quicken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The addendum. And, uh, let's see. I'm not gonna make you read all those in either.
Thanks, Scott.
No, thank, I, I would entertain a motion for this, the communications.
So moved.
As presented. Uh, motion from Lassiter, second from Piper?
Ryan.
Ryan, or Ballard. Okay, all right. And that's the entire front page?
Yep.
There it is. That's all right. Any discussion on that? You want to tell us what's going on there?
Yeah. As I've discussed and shared with you, we've been extremely short-staffed. We finally got enough apps in where I was able to fill, I believe, all my full-time positions now. This next group will start, um, next pay period, June tenth, I believe. So that'll put us full-staffed. And then, as we get caught up, then we'll bring in some part-time folks to fill in the gaps where we need them. That, and, um, we're piecemealing and pulling funds from, um, other line items to fill spots like overtime and CTO pay, training, just, just so we're able to keep up. Overtime is, we're spending a lot of overtime because we're short. So as my big plan is, once we get all these positions filled, obviously our overtime will go back down to normal. So we're just trying to use money that's within our budget to take care of needed expenditures.
Any questions from counsel? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quicken Bush?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
D one fifty-nine commissary clerk, minus fifteen thousand six thirty-eight, to E one fifty-nine commissary clerk, fifteen thousand six hundred and thirty-eight.
You can go ahead and read the next one, too, there.
And C one twenty-five correction officer, twenty thousand six hundred and ten fifty, and D one twenty-five correction officer, twenty thousand six hundred and ten fifty.
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, motion from Quicken Bush, second from Piper. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quicken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Okay, secretary of law probation, D one ninety-four, minus seventeen thousand four twenty-five eighty-eight, to E one ninety-four, secretary of law probation, seventeen thousand four hundred and twenty-five eighty-eight.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from?
Webb.
Webb? Okay.
Can I just say something? You're welcome, Paul. We helped fill his full-time people.
Oh.
He took one of our people. So that's why we're replacing this person. She went over to dispatch, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We had a little bit of give and take at the finance committee, didn't we?
A lot of, a lot of people moving around. So, yeah, we're replacing this person. We're gonna have to now, well, we're gonna be moving within our department. So next month, you'll see a lot of movement coming around from our department, because there's a lot of movement that's gonna happen within juvenile probation and adult probation and juvenile court.
Okay. Any discussion or questions from counsel?
I see.
On that? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quicken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thanks.
You said things are getting reworked out there?
Yeah, so because we're losing this admin person, we're kind of looking at our staffing situation again, like we did with our pretrial screening analysts. We're trying to utilize the staff that we have in a better way. So you're gonna see some changes come through. We're rewriting a job description. We have a half-and-half person that's doing half juvenile probation admin and half court. We're moving that to full-time court and JDAI, right? Is that what we're doing? JDAI coordinator. We're working on that. So you'll see a job description come through that's gonna get approved. We're gonna put that to HR. No money change, just changing positions around. We're gonna ask for some part-time money. We're gonna ask for that to be approved coming out of probation funds, so nothing out of county general. And we're just gonna utilize the staff in a different way that is more suiting to what we're dealing with now. And we're gonna use our admin staff as a unified staff for, for adult and juvenile, rather than, okay, this juvenile person, you know, they're gonna just do juvenile probation. Well, they all do the same thing. So they can flow in between both departments. And then we've got a juvenile court reporter that's leaving. The assistant court reporter will move up, so we will be posting a job for assistant court reporter. We have the FRC coordinator that's gonna go from part-time to full-time, just grant. So there's a lot of movement happening because of a couple of people leaving. So we're just reutilizing all the stuff in a different way to make it work better for that, both departments.
And we did have some discussion back and forth about some changes in the courtrooms there that those are gonna get.
Right. So part of the transfer you did earlier was for the chairs that I asked for permission to go ahead and order. RQAW came out and looked at the space. They are gonna take some of the walls down to a lower level. However, they think that I should go ahead and use the chairs, and we use both the chairs and the, because they can only lower the level of the wall so much. And so the, the judge is still gonna have a trouble, a little bit of trouble seeing the witness, but the courtroom will not, and then the jury wall will come down. And so we're working with RQAW on all of that, but they did tell me to go ahead and purchase the chairs. So that's gonna happen by the end of June. They're gonna come out and, and rework all of the courtrooms. So that's all happening.
And you might check on those doorways, too. We talked about that a little bit.
Yeah, so I talked to him about that after I talked to you, and he said he belo, he believed they were ADA compliant. So he said if we just want to remove the doors, they can remove those doors and finish those walls out. So I'll have them remeasure that area and make sure. I, I'm having a meeting with them today at three o'clock on, on Zoom. So I'm gonna talk to them about, yeah, it's ADA compliant for a regular wheelchair, but if you have somebody in a larger wheelchair, there's no way they can get through there. And we have no way to get them into the court, the main courtroom.
Yeah, I think the issue is with the door on, the door was.
It lowers the.
Yeah, so I don't know where the door fits into that process, whether that's something that you need or don't.
I honestly think all the judges are okay with those doors going away, because they're so loud and annoying when you come in and out.
Okay.
Um, so I think once we remove the doors, we just need to make sure that that then will fit a larger wheelchair. I think Don Dunick, who's in a, you know, motorized wheelchair, barely fits through the opening. So I still say we might need to widen it a little bit, but I will talk with them today about that.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, we're ready for.
And correction officer A one eleven. Um, minus twenty thousand six hundred and ten fifty, B one eleven correction officer, twenty thousand six hundred and ten fifty.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quicken Bush. Any questions from counsel on that? Roll call, please.
There you go.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quicken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes. I was gonna say, I thought you were hanging around up there. I thought maybe you had something else.
I see, that's all I got, Nancy. Okay, ready for appropriations?
We are.
What are you missing, honey? We're doing this, we're doing this one now.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
By the way, thank you guys for, for filling in today. This isn't your.
Sorry, we're not as, I'm not as organized.
Hey, you're, you're doing just fine.
Too nervous, Scott. Does it read prevention tourism?
Just go ahead and read it.
Executive director one oh one, um, sixty-two thousand dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quicken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
196 EMS overtime. COVID monies. $5,000.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Go ahead, tell us what this is.
Okay, so we've been helping out the Health Department since early January with the vaccine clinic. State Indiana, State EMS Commissioner wanted EMS to be on site with these vaccination clinics because of the fear of the allergic reactions. We've only had a couple of reactions, but we've had more diabetics, chest pain, shortness of breath, paintings, and all kinds of other stuff. So we've been providing a paramedic or an EMT with the Health Department when they do their vaccination clinics. And we were running into about $1,000 a week in overtime that we hadn't anticipated. So that's starting to slack off some now, but I want to give a big thank you to the Ball Brothers Foundation. I got with them and applied for a rapid grant, which, when they say rapid, it's really rapid. Before I was even prepared to do all this, for $5,000 to help us out with our overtime, and that's what this $5,000 is for. We're also doing homebound shots for people that can't get out to the clinics, and we've done 50 of those in the last five weeks. We're doing three more today where we actually go out and Health Department sets it all up, we get the medic, or the vaccine from them, go out, give the shot, assess them, stay with them for a half hour or so, make sure they're doing okay, and then we go back and give them their second one. But we've done 50 as of yesterday, we're doing three more today, so, and there's no end in sight, so we're gonna keep doing this. And I've got some other ideas on helping out with overtime down the road here, so that's where we're at. So that's what this is.
Well, real quick, happy EMS week.
Oh, thanks.
I know it was earlier this month, but Delaware County EMS was out there for the Indiana EMS Memorial's 5K race, and it's always good to have Delaware County involved out there doing good things, so. You guys don't get the credit you deserve, so very much appreciate you guys.
Thanks.
And thank you for thanking the Ball Brothers Foundation for the rapid grant.
Yeah, I appreciate it a bunch, so.
Any questions from counsel? Roll call, please.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quicken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
COVID-19 money, um, 311 contractual, $3,600, and 441 equipment, $1,400. That's for GIS.
Time out.
Ball Foundation. Okay.
Let's let Mary motion. We've not heard anything from Mary today.
Hey, you guys are doing fine.
The total on, the total on that one's 5,000, and I would need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Motion from Chambers, second from Webb. Again, this is, I don't see Kyle here today, but he was at Finance Committee meeting, and we.
Our Ball Brothers money, Ball Foundation.
Did I say that, or did I say, okay, yeah, this is, again, thank you to the Ball Brothers Foundation for another rapid grant on that. So, any discussion from counsel on that? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Quicken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
All right, motion to approve financial transfers and to amend salary ordinance with like reductions and to amend hiring freeze ordinance 2020-015.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quicken Bush?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Okay, we are on to committee reports. I have on there an appointment to the Muncie Economic Development Commission. Do I have the right, is that the right?
Yep.
This is that, okay, the right. When, yeah, when we were initially asked about this, it was, I think I got an email for a different name, which we had already appointed to, so I asked Jessica to be involved in that, and she has been all month. So if I could get a motion to approve Jessica on that committee, I believe they meet tomorrow, and you will need to be sworn in.
Direct.
Okay, all right.
So moved.
Motion from Ballard?
Yep.
Yep, second, where'd that, Webb? Okay. Any discussion on that? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quicken Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And we are on, let's see, Resolution 2021-014, and that's the drop program. I told the sheriff that we would get that on this month's agenda, and we have.
So don't arrest us.
There'll be no arresting today. Tony Skinner, Delaware County Sheriff. I came to you a couple of months ago with the proposal to re-up on the drop program with, and to remove the sunset clause. So I know there was discussion then, I'd be more than happy to have more discussion now. I know that the council, the attorney, they've communicated with Stan Brown and the actuaries, as well as the commissioners and their attorneys, so I don't know, you know, what the result of that was, but I'm here today asking you to approve the drop and remove the sunset clause.
And you had said also, it was still, it was still okay with you if the sunset clause was in there as long as it was approved and correct.
It's better than nothing. If that's the route you're gonna take, Mr. Brown did advise, if you, if, if you feel compelled to sunset again, that, that he recommends you make it a five-year sunset and not a three, because in the next three years, and I'm paraphrasing this and going off memory, he said, there's just not enough new people that are eligible for retirement, and if you add that extra two years on, there will be. So if you want more people to evaluate whether it's working or not, whether it's truly cost-neutral, that he recommends you make it a five-year sunset, because doing another three-year really doesn't benefit the analysis of the program.
And it's just up for review, again.
We'll be back here in five years. For three years, or whenever.
Bill, you wanna?
Or maybe never. That's my goal, is to never have to come up and redo this.
Go ahead, Ron, did you have something?
Well, as you know, Sheriff, I did not vote for the drop program the first time around, and I am the one that put the amendment in for the three-year sunset so that we could evaluate this three years later, and that's where we are now. And this is not personal, but something's happened since then that really sincerely concerns me about the future, and that is, is the sheriff's pay has changed substantially, and any sheriff with any kind of seniority goes back on the force would be eligible for the drop, and I'm not sure how that pension would be calculated, but by escrowing three years, they're saying go five years. An individual in the future could have a substantial escrow, which is credit to their service, but would be detrimental to this fund, this retirement fund. As you've heard me before, I've got it in my briefcase where the actuary at the time actually told us we would probably never have to contribute any more than we were at that time into that retirement fund, and from all indication, and anybody I talked to, this local retirement fund does not have enough members to support it in the future. It just won't happen, and the actuaries keep beating around the bush, but we're putting over a million dollars out of taxpayers' money now compared to what we used to put with about $35,000, and it just scares me. I don't know how to correct it. I know it's an asset to any individual that wants to retire and participate in this, but I've even talked to the people at perf, and this would have to be legislative. No one wants to talk about putting the sheriff's deputies in perf. Personally, I think that would be the wise thing to do, because it's substantially a much, much larger fund to draw from. Much.
It's substantially lower for our retirees also, the benefit that they get when they retire. Your perf payout per month is substantially lower than, than a pension payout.
I understand that.
So what you're, what you're proposing here is, is to, to take away from the service that our deputies have earned once they retire. You know, they're already underpaid, and now you, now you want to cut them more once they're gone.
I don't want to cut their retirement, I just want to cut the drop program and that, that accumulation of funds that this drop program creates.
If I could say something, I, you know, you and I, we've had some conversations, and we were talking a little bit about the overtime, and we got to talk a little bit more about the deputy's pay versus surrounding counties' pay. You know, Muncie City Police just did a lateral transfer, significantly higher pay. So you're already fighting an uphill battle as far as keeping recruiting guys and then keeping the ones you have. I think one of the things you said is put the money into training them, and then they usually go to some other apartment, the other departments that pay better. For me personally, I would like to see us do everything we can to incentivize our deputies to stay with Delaware County. If that means a three, five-year drop program, then I think that would be beneficial. It might be a little bit more money, like Ram was saying, on that retirement fund, but as far as the big picture goes, I think it'll alleviate, hopefully alleviate, some of the issues with keeping, keeping the recruits and keeping the employees, which will then save the money in overtime. So hopefully it cancels each other out, but I'm all for offering whatever incentive we can to our public safety officers.
I appreciate that. So, so just to recap drop, so when a, when a deputy hits, hits the point in their career that they're eligible to retire, their, their choices are retire and start drawing their pension, or they can continue working and not draw their pension. All right, so if you retire and you draw your pension, that money's going to them anyway. So then we have to rehire somebody, retrain them. Like you say, we spend, you know, the first nine to 10 months of a deputy's career, we get, we get no benefit from that person, because they spend four and a half months at the academy, and then we spend another four and a half to five, five and a half months training them. So essentially, we're dumping, just a rough figure here, $40,000 into training a deputy, okay? Because the majority of that first year that they're hired, they're, they're no good to us because they can't go out and work on their own. They're, they're in constant training. You're paying them training, and, and sometimes they receive overtime and holiday pay in that first year. So when, when a person gets ready to retire, their choices are retire and start collecting, or continue working and making much more than, than even a new deputy would, their salary, because everybody who's retirement age now still has longevity, most of them still have roll-in longevity. So to, just, just to, to kick a dead horse again, when you retire, you're collecting that money regardless. The way I explained it to Scott the other day was, the way I want to look at it is, if you hold somebody over to work for an additional three years, they're already tired, retired. They can lay on the couch and watch TV, and they're drawing that pension. Or we can retain their, their education, their, their seniority, their training, everything about them for an additional three years. I look at it as rehiring them back as an independent contractor. That's all the drop is. They make the same thing other deputies do, they get the same benefits, everything's the same, but it's only for a three-year term. It just prolongs us from having to hire and retrain somebody new. That's the easiest way for me to look at. It doesn't, I say again, it doesn't cost the county. You know, some people get hung up on the, the money that goes into escrow, and it seemed like a big deal, but that money's already spent when they retire. They can go take a second job, they can lay on the couch, they can golf every day, they can fish, they can do whatever they want. That money's already spent. That's the only way I can put it.
Now, Tony, may I read your email from the fourth? You sent all of us about the pension.
Sure.
You might, so we all, all of us council members received an email from the sheriff, and it said, "This week we received our yearly analysis from One America McCready and Keen regarding the pension. In part, as a result of consistent funding over the past several years and strong asset performance in 2019 and 2020, the retirement plan's fiduciary net position has a percentage of the total pension liability is now 76.33%, which is the first time the plan has been over 70% funded since 2010." So that was some really good news that he wanted to share with us, and kind of to Ron's point with the pension, it does make us all a little nervous, but I also see the value in the drop.
And, you know.
Well, I think that's, I mean, our, this council has made a, a pretty strong effort to make sure that we get funding in, in that pension every year.
Absolutely.
But it does, unfortunately, from councils way before us that didn't fund it, makes it, you know, takes a good chunk of every year, I think somewhere between 1.2 and 1.4 million that we try to, try to fund in there with fees and everything's included there, right off of the top, basically. And we have to keep, my position, I'll speak from my cellphone, is that we've got to keep that commitment to funding that pension. You know, the drop program, I'm, I'm either way on. The way, I think we have this proposed bill, you correct me if I'm wrong, we have it proposed for a three-year.
That's correct.
Which was the same as, and I don't mind reevaluating this every, every three years. I think it's a good, I think it's a good discussion, and I, and, you know, I know you and I and Ron sat down the other day, I mean, I think there's some issues in front of us that we need to discuss and.
Sure.
And see if we can't come together on those, and those will mean, will affect the pension in, in a way that we will probably have to fund it more if we come to an agreement on that. So at this point in time, I would recommend the approval of 2021-014 as, as it is, but as presented, so I would need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Ballard, second from Piper. Any more discussion from counsel on that?
Well, I just, I want to add one more thing before we voted. Obviously, with the fiscal body, we can, you know, we gotta be good stewards of the money, but we also have to, to be good stewards of the community, and, and especially with what's going on in 2021 with the attitude towards our police officers and the situations they find themselves in. I personally feel a lot better if we can hang on to veteran officers as opposed to rookie officers in those situations, making their decisions, so it's kind of, you gotta weigh the balance and how that works out, so I just wanted to make that statement.
And again, I think this is, this like what we did last time with the lateral transfers from other places, is another very small step to continue, continue on, and you, you know that there's a commitment from this council to the Sheriff's Department, so. Any more discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Piper? I'm sorry, Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quicken Bush?
I'm gonna abstain.
Abstain, okay. Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I want to talk briefly about one of the things, so I don't have to come up here when you call for elected officials, but back to the, the overtime issue in the jail, I want to tell you what, what I'm doing to help put a Band-Aid on that. Right now, as of last Friday, we're eight positions short in the jail. That's where we stand now, eight COs short, with nobody in the shoot to hire. We're running, I think, our third hiring process of the year. So we've pulled one of our court officers to work in the jail, and we've also pulled three road deputies to work in the jail. We've never had road deputies that have been in the position that they have to go work in the jail, but we're so critically short up there that we're taking two off afternoon shift and one off midnight shift. They're running a four-week rotation, and then they'll put, after the four weeks, another road deputy will go up and take their spot. So that'll help with the corrections officers at least being able to take a day off if they need to. If they, they're all burned out, they're horribly burned out, and right now, they're being forced in at a level that we've never seen. We're actually forcing overtime on every shift, almost every single day. That's why our overtime budget is gone. So by supplementing those openings with road deputies, it does create a burden on the road, I will tell you that. But right now, the, the priority is to, to allow those corrections officers at least a day off or two if they need it, and believe me, they do. So that's what we're doing on our side, so, you know, we're trying to help. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff. Okay, we've got another resolution on here. Bill, do we want to talk about this before we introduce it?
Yeah, the genesis of this is from the Legislature enacted House Enrolled Act Number 1437 as an emergency act, which means it is in effect now, has been signed by the governor, and it embodies what the rules can be for local legislative bodies in terms of electronic communications and participation in actions of the governing bodies. We have been operating under some of the emergency orders from the governor's office. Those, I think there is still one in effect, but they, they will eventually expire, so I think it's incumbent on the council to adopt some rules that will be effective under House Enrolled Act 1437. The act is written such that the rules cannot be more liberal than what you see here. If the council so chose, they could be more restrictive than what is in this resolution. This was a pattern after a model resolution that was from, was it from AIM?
This might have been from NACO, which, which everyone, I, yeah.
So it, it tracks very closely with that, which in turn tracks very closely with the, the act of the legislature, but it, I think it is important for the council to have rules in place going forward, because the emergency orders will go away.
Well, and I don't know if you guys have all had a chance to read and digest this. I think if we approved this today, if we felt like it needed to be more restrictive, we could. I mean, I think we're at a point now where the council should be able to meet in person for the most part, unless something else were to, were to happen. Things would go the other way, or whatever, as far as COVID goes, or any other thing that may come up in the future there. But anyway, if you guys have any questions on it, if not, I would need a motion to approve, and like I say, if we feel like we want to make this more restrictive at a later date, you know, my goal is to, is to try and have always everybody in this room, and that wasn't possible over the last year, and for good reason. But going forward, I think we're, I'm hoping we're moving out of, out of this.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
A motion from Piper, second from Ballard, and this is Resolution Number 2021-016, and it's a resolution establishing the policy by which members of the Delaware County Council may participate by electronic means of communication. Go ahead, Ron.
That's Mr. Hughes, and this, if someone just chooses not to be at the meeting, they're just absent.
Correct.
This means they can't, if a council member didn't want to come to the meeting, they could electronically go on that program there, observe the meeting, but they couldn't participate.
Well, this, I believe this resolution, if we approve it, means that you could participate, and there are some restrictions in there as to what you could participate in. However, I mean, from my standpoint, as president of the council, I'd rather have you guys here. It's so much easier to deal with, we don't have to deal with the technological issues. It's possible, if you can't be seen and heard at the same time, according to what I'm reading here, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong. You would not be able to cast a vote. And there are things in here that you can't vote for remotely, like the budget. We couldn't have executive sessions, I think, there's a list of things. Adopt a budget, make a reduction in personnel, initiate referendum, impose or increase a fee, impose or increase a penalty, exercise council power of eminent domain, or establish, impose, raise, or renew a tax are what is listed out of there. I think it also says that you couldn't attend two meetings remotely. I think it also says that you couldn't attend two meetings remotely by Zoom in a row.
You may attend two.
You may attend two.
Two in a row, but then at least...
Yeah.
One meeting in person must be, must follow that.
And it also said, what, 50% of the council in person?
Yeah, that's correct.
I don't see any need for this myself. That's my opinion.
Well, I think, Bill, tell me what your advice is, Bill. I think what you're...
Without it, I think you're not going to be able to participate remotely once the emergency orders expire.
Well, that's the way it's been for years. We haven't, until we had this COVID thing, you either came to the meeting or you didn't participate, period.
Well, and I think, Bill, does this extend to committee meetings and things like that as well?
Yes.
So it wouldn't just be the county council meeting for what we'd be approving this would be us, but I'm not excited about it either. But I think what Bill's telling us is we probably need to approve something. If we want to make this more restrictive, we can.
I don't think we need it.
I think having it on file wouldn't be a bad idea, honestly. You know what I mean?
I don't know why we need it, period. I mean, we're just causing restrictions for ourselves, elected, to be at the meetings when they're scheduled. That's...
That's, we are acting on what the state legislator has approved, and this is, this is what we felt like we would introduce to you guys if you aren't, I don't know what, if we don't have anything approved or on file concerning these meetings, what are our, what are our options? Basically, we appear in person from here on out?
Once the emergency orders expire, yeah, that would be it.
I guess one concern, would that also do apply to our committee meetings that are still meeting in Zoom? Some of them?
I think being that it applies to a broad spectrum here, I mean, especially the committees as well, you know, sometimes it is a little bit more conducive for these committees to have these Zoom meetings at times. So, I mean, I don't have a problem voting on it, getting it done, and moving on, to be honest with you.
I don't have a motion at this point.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion from Webb, second from Ballard.
I thought you did have a motion.
Yeah, we already had that.
Did we?
Piper and Ballard.
Thought we had a motion.
Well, it's been a long meeting, sorry. Let's go back then. Any more discussion?
Is this sunset then when the state restrictions go away?
That's when it starts, I think.
I think the whole point is for it to be here when the emergency goes away, and we would still have that flexibility.
It gives us another option.
Right.
If something happens. You never know. We didn't think 2020 would be the way it was, so. Well, and I think that's, the reason that the state legislator acted on this, I guess my opinion, is they don't know when something else is going to happen, and they want to be ready for it if it does, and want us to be ready for it if it does. Obviously, this comes down to us as well, so. Again, it's up to you guys on whether you want to approve this, approve something different, restrict it. We could approve it now. If we feel like it's an issue, we can always restrict it later.
Well, just one more comment, right in the middle of the page.
Page one.
Yeah, page one. "The act requires the governing body to adopt a written policy establishing the procedures that apply to a member's participation in a meeting by electronic means of communication and may adopt procedures that are more restrictive than procedures established by Indiana Code 514-1.5-3.5," parentheses, D. Why can't we just go by the Indiana code? That's what we've sort of been doing all along. I'm going to vote no, I'll put it that way. You guys do what you wish.
Bill, what are your thoughts on Ron's comments, I guess?
Well, that's what we're doing, is we are following the House Enrolled Act 1437, almost to the letter. And as Scott said, we can make it more restrictive at some future time if that would be the council's wishes.
Any other discussion?
In that case, I'll call for the question.
Well, I was getting ready to call for the roll call, so. If you call for the question, and we get a second, we got to vote on that, so. So I will have...
Take it back, take it back.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
No.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes. And just a comment on that, I don't see this as a hall pass for council members to be able to call in on Zoom. I mean, if there's a situation that prevents you from being at a meeting, then I get that, but I think the best thing is for everybody to be in this room to make decisions, so.
We have that responsibility back to the voters, right?
Yep.
So it's our duty to be here, and obviously, sometimes things happen, and...
Okay, any department heads have anything to say today? All right.
Hello, everybody. So my name is Lauren Timmy. I'm the, well, prior was the Ag and Natural Resources educator for the extension office, but I'm coming to you in my new role as county extension director, so I'm going to be happy to really work with you guys moving forward. I saw a few of you were opening up our annual extension board meeting letters, so Ron has his beautifully displayed for everybody up front. And that is next Friday from 11:00 to 2:00, and that's going to be a drive-through, so you can come through, pick up a lunch, we can social distance, discuss things if you'd like, as well as getting our annual report. And we will be publishing that in another way for those of you who can't come, but thanks.
Can you go over where and when on that?
It will be at the fairgrounds next Friday, June 4th, from 11:00 to 2:00.
We give you RSVP now.
You can, Jane. We're happy to take it.
Okay, now it says it's from 11:00 to 1:00.
Okay, that's what it's from, 11:00 to 1:00.
Good girl.
We're going to be there from 10:00 to 2:00 for cleanup and, sorry. And I'd be happy to stay another hour if you want to talk. But, yes.
I will plan to be there.
One or two.
Just make it two.
Okay. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, any new business?
There are no comments on the Facebook stream, and I have no emails that have come through, so.
Okay. Yes, Ron.
I would just like to compliment our president on this meeting. This has had some complications, some issues that don't always come up, and Scott has really been working very hard. I know we've communicated some, and he's communicated with others. Just wanted to compliment him on a meeting well done.
There was a lot to get ready for, for this one, and a lot of extremely important stuff for the future of the community here at stake, and we're just kind of a stepping stone for the next step for these economic development things.
Real quick, I just want to comment, though, too, on Ron, well, just to kind of compound on Ron there a little bit, but I don't think people realize what the president of the council has to do, and how many phone calls he's on, and what he does throughout the week. So Scott, I'll commend you as well. I mean, I think you've done a heck of a job, so very much appreciate your leadership.
Thank you.
And I know, I compliment him, I guess. He always calls me, and we talk all the time, so he is working.
He's working hard, yes.
Yes.
It is a little extra responsibility, but in the, in the all, you know, in the end...
You get that big stipend.
Yeah, right. Yeah. It's worth it just to be able to set the agenda. You guys will figure it out someday, I'm sure.
I came by your office the other night after hours, and your truck was there.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and I'll tell you, I mean, it's not just the job of the president. Sometimes this job takes you away from other things, and you have to reallocate your time to different times, and I find myself in the office very, very early sometimes and very, very late sometimes, and there are times where I can get out of there in the afternoon, and yesterday was one of them, but I went home and was on the phone back and forth, dealing with all this and making sure that, I know I talked to Brad Bookout several times last week, and the company, obviously, was going to fly in and wanted to make sure that things were on, and so did I. So anyway, I appreciate all your input and all your guys' help. I know I bounced stuff off of several of you and used Ron's experience and stuff, so.
Well, I tell you, we should be so thankful for Brad and Bill and what they do, what they do for us, or certainly...
They work their tails off.
We get our monies worth.
And Tracy Lutton as well. I mean, we'd asked them, you know, over a period of several months now to try and, you know, work together on these economic development things, and they are doing it, obviously, so.
And they are so professional at it.
They're a true asset. They really know what they're doing.
All right. If there's nothing else, we will, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard.
Does anybody know when the June meeting is?
Has, yeah, I just wrote it down.
No, I mean the AIC June meeting.
Oh, so that, for 20...
We got a roll call, do we?
Yeah, we got to do a roll call.
Oh, okay. Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes. Make sure you guys sign everything that needs to be signed today, and if you don't, Denise will call you, and you'll have to make a special trip in to sign papers.
I really just made that last comment.